At this time, I'd like to call this meeting of the Washington County Board of Commissioners to order. Please be advised, this public meeting of the Washington County Board of Commissioners will be going on live stream on the Commissioners YouTube channel. As we do every meeting, we start with our prayer. The prayer will be offered by Pastor William Younger of the Church of the Covenant, Washington. Pastor?
Would you bow your heads and pray with me? Almighty God, our heavenly Father, we give you thanks, we give you praise for all of your goodness, your mercy, and for all of your mighty works. Father, you are a loving and good and gracious God. We thank you for creating us and for sustaining us day by day. We thank you that you have made us in your image to exist with others in this wonderful community that we call home. Father, we thank you for all of our elected officials. We thank you for our vets, the businesses, the churches, the families, and all the individuals that make our city the great place that it is. And Father, I pray for all of our civil servants, especially for our first responders this day, for their families. Bless them, protect them, and may their work be fruitful and successful for the flourishing of our community. Father, be with our judges, our attorneys, our law enforcement. Grant that they would never neglect nor abuse their authority, but that they would stand firm for truth and justice. Again, oh Lord, keep them safe. Keep them protected from harm as they serve us and serve our community. And finally, Father, I pray for this meeting today. Give the Commissioners here assembled the wisdom and the guidance as they deliberate on the items before them. May every decision be righteous in your sight for our benefit and for your glory. We pray all these things in the name of Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior.
Thank you, Pastor. Seems like this is United States Navy Day. We've got Sean Gillespie from the United States Navy is going to lead us Pledge of Allegiance today. He's a Navy Petty Officer, 3rd Class. He served as an electrician and mechanic for seven and a half years. He's part of Charlie Company, 228 Battalion aboard the USS Constellation. In his spare time, he enjoys Notre Dame football. So what I'm going to ask, since this is kind of a Veterans Day event here, how about for all the veterans, kind of go in the back and join Sean and Mr. Beetner, our honorary today. If you could go up there with Sean and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and wish you Navy guys 250th birthday, and of course, Marine Corps 250th birthday too.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I think that's most we've had lead us in the pledge for a while.
At this time, I entertain a motion to approve minutes number 1215 dated September 18th, 2025, and minute number 1216 dated October 2nd, 2025. Senator, roll call, please.
Mr. Maggie?
Yes.
Ms. Janice?
Yes.
Yes. We have one special order of business today. I'm going to allow my esteemed colleague, Larry Maggie, to take the lead here. We'd like to do a certificate of appreciation for Marty Beetner. So Commissioner Maggie, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate that. You know, it's an honor to do this. I've known this family, this company for a long time. They're just not someone who just came here. They worked here, they live here. They're actually the first company, Accutrex Products Incorporated, first company after the Isoplex that went to South Point around 1980. They have a business there which still continues to operate. This award, I can't stress what it is. It's a national award for Marty. He is a veteran, and he's got an esteemed background. He just came back from a reunion. Some of his colleagues that are left. And this is a national award that he got for hiring veterans. Mind you, this is throughout the nation. He come in in the mid-cap corporations, companies, and his company is being honored by the National American Legion, not locally. Of course, we've got a lot of local folks here, and we do appreciate them being here. But they're here. We've got Marine Corps League, we've got Navy, we've got Air Force. We have all kinds of representation from the different armed services, and we're very proud of that. Obviously, Marty, these guys have a passion just like you do. That's why they're here to honor you, because that's so important to veterans, hiring veterans. And that's what Marty and his family has done most of his life. Now, Marty not only is a good business person, been a good community leader in Washington County, but he's got quite a background in the military too. He's a veteran. He enlisted in the United States Navy in April 1967. He attended boot camp at Great Lakes. Then he was trained at the Hospital Corps of School at Great Lakes. Then he attended field medical training camp with Marines. Now, for folks who are not aware, he was a Navy corpsman, which is very near and dear to Marines, Army, everybody. They're very important. But he just wasn't in a field hospital or someplace. He served with hotel companies, 2nd Battalion, 26 Marines, 1st Marine Division in Vietnam for a year. And he was honorably discharged in 1970. So Marty didn't just talk the talk, he walked the talk. And he's been a lifelong advocate about veteran causes, hiring veterans, and it's very important. He's reached out to a lot of nonprofits that they've helped. And Accutrex Products and Beetner Family is just a well-known name in Washington County, and we're very, very proud of it. And that's why the Washington County Board of Commissioners wanted to present you with this acknowledgement. And also, there's some people here from the American Legion to acknowledge you also were the American Legion of War. So I know, Marty, Marty, Judy, Mark, and Danielle, come on up here. Kind of embarrassed you guys. Couldn't stand over by the podium. I'll read the first one. We have a certificate of appreciation. We, the Washington County Board of Commissioners, commend the unwavering compassion of Kansas City Business Senator Marty Martin P. Beetner, Jr., in appreciation of your distinguished service as a Vietnam veteran and your lifelong advocacy for employing others who have served our nation. Your generous philanthropy has touched countless lives, from employing local veterans to raising funds for the city mission and partnering with local businesses to provide transportation. You are rebuilding lives, one act of generosity at a time. We thank you for your enduring commitment to Washington County. It's presented at the 16th Day of October, signed by the Washington County Board of Commissioners. Congratulations. Now, we've got some other folks. We've got Susan Patchen. Susan's the Western Vice Commander. Susan, here's the American Legion certificate of appreciation if you want to present that and also.
Marty, I just got to meet you, but I am very proud of you as a Vietnam veteran, myself, my husband, a combat Vietnam veteran also. I am the Western Vice Commander. I am here, and I am extremely proud to present this award from the National American Legion. And I am here on behalf of myself, State Department Commander Pat Love, and the entire Department of Pennsylvania for your service and being recognized by our national organization. Congratulations for continuing to support and help our veterans and military families as we all try to go through and walk the walk and care for our brothers and sisters. Thank you. And thank you to your family for all their support also.
Accutrex is in Cecil Township, one of the first businesses there. They have one from the Board of Supervisors.
Good morning. I'm here on behalf of Cecil Township Board of Supervisors to present Marty and Accutrex's proclamation from Cecil Township. I'll read it. Whereas the strength and prosperity of Cecil Township are built upon the dedication and service of its citizens, including the brave men and women who have served in the armed forces of the United States, whereas the transition from military to civilian life can present challenges for veterans seeking meaningful employment and opportunities to apply their skills and leadership experience. Whereas Accutrex Products, a proud business located in Cecil Township, has demonstrated an exceptional commitment to supporting those who have served our nation by actively recruiting, hiring, and retaining United States military veterans. Whereas its veterans' hiring initiatives, Accutrex Products not only honors the sacrifice of those who have defended our freedoms, but also strengthens its workforce with the discipline, teamwork, and dedication that veterans bring to their professions. Whereas the leadership of Accutrex serves as a model for other businesses throughout our community, reflecting the highest ideals of corporate citizenship, patriotism, and community partnership. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Cecil Township Board of Supervisors hereby recognize and commend Accutrex for its outstanding contributions to the employment and advancement of our nation's veterans and for its continued role as a valued member of the Cecil Township business community. Thank you.
Marty, you guys want to come over here and give, and then you can say a few words there. Okay, Marty.
Sure. I don't want to be too long because I know there's a lot of other important businesses that need to be taken care of, but I want to thank the Commissioners and Larry in particular for this honor. We have worked very hard through the years to hire veterans. I was telling several people earlier today, I think we're most proud of the fact that we've hired three homeless veterans who were housed at the city mission, who now have their own apartments, have their own cars. They're wonderful employees, and we've helped them to get back on their feet. We would do more and more of that if we could. It's just a matter of getting the connections to get the people to come. So we do our best to hire veterans. They're good workers. We will continue to do that as long as, you know, if we can. Thank you so much for this honor. Thanks to you all for coming out to recognize this, and I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Marty. And I appreciate, thanks all the veterans for coming out. We appreciate you taking time out of your busy morning. Most of these folks probably don't even know Marty other than by name, and they make sure they came out. That's important. Veterans' issues are to these folks. So we appreciate, we've got people from Marine Corps League, American Legion, Legion Riders, and just a variety of groups, and we appreciate that. Thank you. And you don't have to stick around for the meeting. You can go. We won't feel bad leaving. Real quick, let's rat my heart and show for the Corbin County Commission. Welcome.
Okay, everyone. I would like to continue with our meeting at this time, so I'd ask that you would take your respective seats so we can continue. I coach 6th grade football. I can herd cats all day long. It's okay. All right. Before we get started, I recognize a bunch of people. I would like to recognize Charlotte Chover, Past County Commissioner. Thank you for being here. And Carrie Correll, Recorder of Deans, and Laura Hoppe,θonatory. Thanks for being here, guys. At this time, is there agenda comments? No agenda comments, moving forward to old business. Mr. Swett?
Thank you.
I undertake change order purchasing on behalf of Human Services. Respectfully request that Commissioners approve the change order with Stone Mountain Group, Kennesaw, PA, for the Washington County Human Services Automatic Door Opener Project. Change order number one, install additional S7000 low-energy auto door operator for a cost of $590. This change order has been reviewed and recommended for award by the planning commission.
Senator?
Roll call, please.
Ms. Matthews?
Yes.
Ms. Janice?
Yes. That's all we have for old business. Thank you. Mr. Swett, new business, Chief Clerk?
Chief Clerk, on behalf of the Redevelopment Authority of the County of Washington, respectfully request that Commissioners adopt a resolution approving an amendment to the 20.2 grant agreement with the Pennsylvania Housing Finance Agency for the Fair Fund.
Senator?
Second. Sorry, I've got a pen explosion up here. Roll call, please.
Mr. Maggie?
Yes.
Ms. Janice?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Chief Clerk, respectfully request that Commissioners adopt a resolution approving a grant in the amount of $35,000 from the Washington County Authority to Penn Highlands Mon Valley Hospital to purchase a police interceptor all-wheel-drive vehicle to assist with transportation needs as a substance recovery unit, which is desirable for the health and safety of the residents in the area served by this project.
Senator?
Second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Maggie?
Yes.
Ms. Janice?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Planning, on behalf of Parks and Recreation, respectfully request that Commissioners sign the notice of termination for the Chapter 102 permit for the Cross Creek Park Discovery Cove.
Senator?
Second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Maggie?
Yes.
Ms. Janice?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Planning, on behalf of Parks and Recreation, respectfully request that Commissioners authorize the submission of a $25,000 grant application with the Foundation for Pennsylvania Waterships. This grant will offset costs for a shore stabilization project at Cross Creek Lake in partnership with the PA Fish and Boat Commission.
Senator?
I thought you were dealing with the Fish Commission. I didn't hear it. So moved. I'm sorry. Roll call, please.
Mr. Maggie?
Yes.
Ms. Janice?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Finance, on behalf of the Sheriff, respectfully request that Commissioners approve a grant application with Project Lifesaver to help locate individuals with cognitive impairments. There is no annual fee and no county funds are required.
Senator?
Second. Please.
Mr. Maggie?
Yes.
Ms. Janice?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Human Resources, respectfully request that Commissioners approve the renewal of the General Services Agreement with the Washington Health System Occupational Medicine Center for Business as Washington Physicians Group. The agreement provides pre-employment exams and related testing for all county employees in job categories subject to PEDOP regulations. The rates of the contract will remain the same and will be effective January 1st, 2026 through December 31st, 2026.
Senator?
Second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Maggie?
Yes.
Ms. Janice?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Human Resources, respectfully request that Commissioners approve the renewal of the Drug and Alcohol Testing Agreement with the Washington Health System Occupational Medicine Center. The agreement provides general drug and alcohol testing services for all county employees in job categories subject to PEDOP regulations. The rates of the contract will remain the same and will be effective January 1st, 2026 through December 31st, 2026.
Senator?
Second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Maggie?
Yes.
Ms. Janice?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Human Resources, respectfully request that Commissioners approve the renewal of the Professional Services Contract with the Wilford R. Cameron Wellness Center to provide employees wellness services. The rates will increase this list and will be effective January 1st, 2026 through December 31st, 2026.
Senator?
Second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Maggie?
Yes.
Ms. Janice?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Human Resources, respectfully request that Commissioners approve the renewal of the Benefit Optile Rate for 2026 Health Insurance to remain the same at $200 per month.
Senator?
Second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Maggie?
Yes.
Ms. Janice?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Human Resources, respectfully request that Commissioners approve the contract renewal with Highmark Blue Cross Blue Shield for the Highmark HRA Plan and Performance Blue Plan for medical coverage effective January 2026 through December 31st, 2026. Premiums will increase by 6.87%.
Senator?
Second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Maggie?
Yes.
Ms. Janice?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Human Resources, respectfully request that Commissioners approve the renewal of the Highmark Freedom PPO Blue Contract for Employees Over 65, effective January 1st, 2026 through December 31st, 2026. Premiums will decrease by 5%.
Senator?
Second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Maggie?
Yes.
Ms. Janice?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Human Resources, respectfully request that Commissioners approve the renewal of the Highmark Blue Cross Blue Shield Contract for Vision Coverage effective January 1st, 2026 through December 31st, 2026. Premiums will remain the same.
Senator?
Second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Maggie?
Second. Yes.
Ms. Janice?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Human Resources, respectfully request that Commissioners approve the renewal of the United Concordia Contract for Dental Coverage effective January 1st, 2026 through December 31st, 2026. Premiums will increase by 14.9%.
Senator?
Second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Maggie?
Yes.
Ms. Janice?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Human Resources, respectfully request that Commissioners approve the renewal of the Standard for Life, AD&amp;D, and Long-Term Disability Insurance Contract. The following rates will remain the same effective January 1st, 2026 through December 31st, 2026.
Senator?
Second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Maggie?
Yes.
Ms. Janice?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Human Resources, respectfully request that Commissioners approve the renewal of the Continental Solid Money Insurance Contract for Voluntary Benefits effective January 1st, 2026 through December 31st, 2026.
Senator?
Second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Maggie?
Yes.
Ms. Janice?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Children and Youth Services, respectfully request that Commissioners approve the provider agreements with the recommended organizations to deliver placement and support services totaling $4,600,000 for the period of July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026, and no additional county funds are required.
Senator?
Second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Maggie?
Yes.
Ms. Janice?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Children and Youth Services, respectfully request that Commissioners approve a provider agreement with Blueprints to administer the CHECK and CONNECT Program for at-risk true use. The contract authorization amount is $350,000 for the period of July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026, and no additional county funds are required.
Senator?
Second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Maggie?
Yes.
Ms. Janice?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Children and Youth Services, respectfully request that Commissioners approve a provider agreement with Pennsylvania Mental Health Consumers Association to administer the PULSE Program, which will support 50 to 60 youth and young adults transitioning from child serving systems to adulthood for the period of July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026. The contract authorization amount is $150,000 and no additional county funds are required.
Senator?
Second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Maggie?
Yes.
Ms. Janice?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Children and Youth Services, respectfully request that Commissioners approve a provider agreement addendum with twin fines for foster care placement services. The contract authorization amount will be increased from $100,000 to $300,000 for the period of July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026, and no additional county funds are required.
Senator?
Second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Maggie?
Yes.
Ms. Janice?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Behavioral Health and Developmental Services, respectfully request that Commissioners approve the year-end contract adjustment agreements with the recommended providers for the period of July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2025, and no additional county funds are required. The total contract authorization amount will be increased to $692,124, and no additional county funds are required.
Senator?
Second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Maggie?
Yes.
Ms. Janice?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Behavioral Health and Developmental Services, respectfully request that Commissioners approve contract agreements in the total amount of $151,172 with the recommended organizations for the period of July 1st through June 30th, 2026, and no additional county funds are required.
Senator?
Second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Maggie?
Yes.
Ms. Janice?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Human Services, respectfully request that Commissioners approve an MOU with the Greater Desperd Community Food Bank for the Washington County Department of Human Services to provide SNAP benefits, outreach, and application assistance for the period of October 1st, 2025 through September 30th, 2026. Greater Desperd Community Food Bank will reimburse the Department of Human Services up to $3,500 per quarter, and no county funds are required.
Senator?
Second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Maggie?
Yes.
Ms. Janice?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Human Services, respectfully request that Commissioners approve a partnership agreement with Trying Together, a nonprofit organization in support of its proposed initiative for assisted care, a regional workforce and employer initiative. This multi-county strategic strategy seeks to address one of the reasons for significant workforce barriers through an application to the AORC Power Initiative, and no county funds are required.
Senator?
Second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Maggie?
Yes.
Ms. Janice?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Human Services, respectfully request that Commissioners approve the opioid settlement funding agreement with Loyal in the amount of $2,500. This is subject to the approval of this list.
Senator?
Mr. Maggie?
Yes.
Ms. Janice?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Purchasing, on behalf of Human Services, respectfully request that Commissioners approve the purchase of flooring from Von Greer Spash floors for the Avella Wellness Center at a total cost of $28,698.78, and will be paid with opioid plans.
Senator?
Second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Maggie?
Yes.
Ms. Janice?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Purchasing, on behalf of Others and Grouds, respectfully request that Commissioners authorize the advertising for bid proposals for concrete repairs and/or paving of the boat street sidewalks.
Senator?
Second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Maggie?
Yes.
Ms. Janice?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Purchasing, on behalf of Corrections, respectfully request that Commissioners approve an agreement with Adams County for the reciprocal provision of housing of all offenders on and as needed basis, as per contract conditions, including $90 per day per inmate plus transport and any medical expenses. Costs will be paid through the Corrections Operating Budget.
Senator?
Second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Maggie?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Purchasing, on behalf of Public Safety, respectfully request that Commissioners approve a battery replacement purchase agreement from Veritiv Services, Inc., for both the Courthouse Square and Courthouse Lever UPS Systems. Total cost, including installation, will be $13,916.76, and will be paid with Public Safety Operating Budget.
Senator?
Second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Maggie?
Yes.
Ms. Janice?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Purchasing, on behalf of Information Technology, respectfully request that Commissioners approve a professional services agreement with the Multi-State Information Sharing and Analysis Center for Cybersecurity and Data Protection Services. Total cost will be $4,995, which will be paid through IT's operating budget.
Senator?
Second. Please.
Mr. Maggie?
Yes.
Ms. Janice?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Purchasing, on behalf of Housekeeping, respectfully request that Commissioners approve cost increases for cleaning supplies from Project Manager Jack Fry Sales and Service, effective through June 30th, 2026.
Senator?
Second.
Mr. Maggie?
Yes.
Ms. Janice?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Purchasing, on behalf of Information Technology, respectfully request that Commissioners approve an agreement addendum with Red Helm, formerly Ideal Integrations, for the provision of 500GB additional archiving storage at a cost of $50 per month to house campus-wide county emails. These costs will be paid through IT's operational budget.
Senator?
Second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Maggie?
Yes.
Ms. Janice?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Purchasing, on behalf of Information Technology, respectfully request that Commissioners approve an as-needed agreement with Evolution E-Cycling for cleaning, removal, and destruction certifications on county electronic equipment. Costs will be paid according to the 2025-2026 B schedule for services.
Senator?
Second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Maggie?
Yes.
Ms. Janice?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes. Does it conclude?
That's all.
Okay. Thank you. It was a lot. We appreciate it. It moves us on to the public comment. The views and opinions expressed by the speakers during the public comment are exclusively those of the speaker and do not reflect or represent those of Washington County Commissioners and have not been verified. We have three speakers today. The first speaker is The first speaker is going to be Kristi McCory.
Kristi McCory.
Thank you, Kristi McCory. Microphone is yours, you have three minutes, okay? Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm here today because serious issues are happening on county-owned property. And despite sending multiple emails over the last couple of weeks, I've received no response. I want to make sure these concerns are on the public record. The Washington County Fair Board unilaterally changed its longstanding daytime voting process in September 2025 without providing the required thirty-day notice to shareholders, but without holding shareholders vote to amend the bylaws. Several board members, including those up for reelection, voted on that motion. That is a direct violation of their bylaws and robust rules of order. This election is coming up November 18th. These actions disenfranchise shareholders who have participated in fair elections for decades and erode trust in how this organization is run. There is an unconfirmed statement that the Fair Board explicitly says just what the board wants. If true, that means there is no neutral legal check, no accountability, and no one's safeguarding shareholders or the public's interest. This is happening on county-owned property and that matters. As Commissioners, you are the property owners. You may not appoint their board, but you absolutely set the conditions under which this nonprofit operates on county land. If the current lease or operating agreement does not require basic governance standards like shareholder notice, transparent elections, or public posting of meetings, that is a serious gap, and it is a gap only the county can close. So I'm asking directly, will Commissioners review the lease or operating agreement to determine what oversight is in place? Will you require clear governance and transparency standards moving forward?